All right, the time being nine o'clock. Bring this meeting to order. Everybody rise, remove your covers. Pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, not in the streets of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
John, Gary.
Here.
Sherri. Here.
Yes.
Dan.
Here. Next item on the agenda, do any of the commissioners have any reason to abstain for a financial conflict of interest?
No.
Joe?
No.
No.
Me as well, no. Any non-financial interests?
No.
No?
No.
No.
All right. Next item on the agenda, yes. What's that? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. This time, are there any additions?
Yes. I'd like to discuss guest speakers at the planning. More so on planning and zoning, I was contacted with a request for a guest speaker, so just kind of discuss it here.
Okay. We'll do that 5A after the resolution. So 5A is P and Z this speaker?
Yeah.
Anybody else like to add anything?
We have the highway department, I just had a question about the snorkel. That's all I.
Okay. Yeah, just ask it. Any other additions or corrections?
Nope.
This time, I had to entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody at this time who'd like to make a public comment? Now would be the time. Come on up, you have three minutes. Introduce yourself.
Louis Johnson, the only comment I have to make is, I'm deaf as a post and I'd really appreciate it if you would pull the microphones closer and speak directly into them.
Thank you. This time, is there any other individuals who'd like to make a public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, at this time, we're going to close the public comment session. Next item on the agenda is update on James River Bridges by Clark Engineering. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Morning.
Morning.
Adam Polly with Clark Engineering. I also have Kevin Goff, my regional manager with Clark Engineering is here also. I handed out two pieces of paper. The first one without all the colors on it are the four Jim River Bridges that we'll be discussing. The second one with all the colors on it is the prioritization that we do, that includes all of your bridges. Basically, we use the sufficiency rating of the bridge, which is kind of like the health index of the bridge. And we either, we take points off of it, so we downgrade the sufficiency rating based on what type of road it's on. So if it's on a county paved road, the sufficiency rating goes down to make it higher on the prioritization. Now, this is just our view of it. This is information for the highway department and you guys to take and do your own prioritization. There's other local stuff that we don't know about, you know, if there's a dairy farm close, or this bridge is more important than another one, that's where you guys come in and change this prioritization.
So does this sufficiency rating have any merit or bearing to the state?
Yes, this is what we.
So they'll go by what your sufficiency rating is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So the sheet that we're going to focus on here is the one with the four Jim River Bridges. Like I said, the sufficiency rating is kind of like the health index of the bridge. What we generally say is, any sufficiency rating from 60 to 100 classifies it as a good condition bridge. From 40 to 60 is fair condition, and anything below 40 is poor condition. It's eligible for replacement through the BIG program through the state if it's below 60 and structurally deficient. And then, right next to the sufficiency rating column, there's a BIG score column. And BIG stands for Bridge Improvement Grant. We've done a couple preservation projects here in Yankton County. There's also the preliminary engineering and the replacement. So these BIG scores, the higher the score is, the better shot you have of getting funding. So we have laid out here the year built for each bridge, the average daily traffic for each bridge, the current weight restriction, and then we have two calculated weight restrictions. One is the LRFR, which if you guys were here when I had all the other discussions last year, that's the preferred method from the feds. Then there's the calculated LFR weight restriction. That is the older method, and it's still acceptable. So you can go down there and see that these differ pretty substantial in some cases.
And the difference between those two are how long your bridge is going to last?
Right. This is not a safety issue. This is trying to get the most out of the bridge. If we use the LRFR, we're hopefully going to gain years on the back end, we're going to prolong the life of that bridge. The LFR, you know, maybe that the load's going over at those restrictions will do irreplaceable damage to the structure.
It's really sacrificing, you know, usefulness of the bridge now, we can haul more weight now, but its life will be decreased. And do you have any indication of how much it would cut off the life of the bridge?
I don't.
No idea?
It could be five years, it could be 15.
Can you explain the difference between the methods? I mean, is it just taking the LFR and putting the, derating it by 20% or something, or I mean, what?
So the LFR is the old design method. So it uses a lighter truck to design with.
Okay.
And it's less accurate. So if you, you know, you take a line on a graph, the LFR is kind of a shotgun, you know, you could have points all over. The LRFR is more accurate. The points on the line are very close to that linear projection.
Okay. When you say lighter truck into account, I mean, what do you mean by that? Eighty thousand pounds to me is eighty thousand pounds, I guess.
Right. It's a different configuration of the truck. I mean, we designed for the HL93 truck right now.
Okay.
That's what the LRFR. The LFR is the HS20 truck, is what we designed with.
Okay, so LFR uses the HS20, LFR uses the what?
The LRFR uses HL93.
Oh. Can you give a brief summary on those differences?
As far as the weights and, I guess, what are you looking?
Yeah, what's the difference between an HL93 and an HS20?
It's just the configuration and the weight of the truck. That's the difference.
So what is the weight of the truck?
I don't, I don't have that right off my head.
Can you get that back to me?
Sure. You want the weight of the HL93 truck and the weight of the HS20 truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think probably the commissioners want it too.
So if we focus on the sheet here, this is, we had a meeting with Mike and Brian, this is kind of what we came up with as our.
Let's circle back to the trucks a minute, just so you understand. This isn't as simple as like, how much does the truck weigh? When you think about a bridge, and you've got different lengths of beams and their substructures, where those tires fall, so a traditional tractor trailer that we're used to see in the 80,000 pound truck, that's not necessarily always the critical load. There's a lot of new vehicles that we don't necessarily see on the roads that we have to design for, that kind of come into some of those newer design, our load rating methodologies or design methodologies. So there's seven or eight trucks that we actually design for and load rate for, and we've got a handout, which, we talked about that on the way down, I wish we'd have brought that so we could have showed you what those different trucks look like, which I think might kind of start to explain to you what.
Axle configurations and whatnot?
Yeah, yeah, some of those standard configurations that we're designing for. But a lot of times, you do a bridge, and if you're familiar with, we call them special hauling vehicles, you'll see those, you know, it's just axles from front to back, it'll be like a rock truck or something. Those sometimes can be the most critical because they don't take the load and spread it out, so that load gets more concentrated. At one point, you put that at mid-span of a long beam, and that could be really critical. So that's some of those are why it doesn't matter, and it depends on what type of truck you're doing, but we'll get you guys some more information.
Just like you said about the tires, if it's a 20-inch tire, it's a 22 or a 24, or if it's a cement tire that's twice as wide, it makes a big difference on your bridge when they scale you, so.
We don't necessarily get down to the tires make a difference, it's the weight that comes down on that general tire configuration. How many there are, it's still putting the same amount of weight transferring through the deck into the girders.
Except it's just like a punch coming down versus a something flat.
Yeah.
So it puts more pressure in one spot than does it overall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's the difference with the tires.
I don't know if I helped, I just explained.
No, you did help, thank you.
You can get all those things.
Good detail, you guys are going right in deep.
Maybe jumping the gun too, but just looking down the road, is it possible to use the LFR weight and restrict the bridges to only, say, a traditional five axle semi, you know, six, or five axle load, six axle? Get rid of these specialty vehicles, just don't allow them, period?
Yeah, that's absolutely a choice that you can make, and that's been discussed in other counties. We do work in counties from Aberdeen to Yankton and everywhere in between.
Because to me, take.
That has been the response in some counties, is outlaw special hauling vehicles before they become critical. Because when, so the special hauling vehicle looks funny, but when we post it, it's just that small truck, it looks like a small grain truck, the old-fashioned grain truck. That's sort of what it looks like we're posting for, but that's the single unit that we can post for, then you have the longer combination units or a traditional tractor trailer.
Right. Because to me, just in general, we can prolong the life of a bridge as long as we want, but if it's not usable, who cares how long the bridge lasts?
Yeah.
If it's not open to commerce. So I guess, trying to find that happy medium, I guess, where we can protect our bridges, but they have to be usable.
I always say this to Adam, I'm not going to take offers.
They need to be usable, bottom line, I get what you're saying.
Right. And that was the next thing I was going to talk about here, is all the way on the right, we have a bridge condition priority. That's kind of what us at Clark, Mike and Brian had discussed at our meeting. The Stone Church Bridge is the worst off priority, or condition-wise, that was our number one, and number two was Fleegs. I mean, this is just our priority here.
Sure.
So if we take Stone Church, for example, as our number one priority, say we're hoping to get it replaced within five years, let's post it at LFR. Let's get the most out of it in that five years that we can. We're not looking to prolong the life of the bridge anymore. But if you get down to number four is Johnson Bridge, after we did the splice retrofit, that's the last priority. Maybe we want to look at going to LRFR. We've already had problems with it, with the splices. Maybe we try to be more restrictive on that one. All stuff for you guys to think about.
According to the BIG score, all of these are poor condition, is that correct?
No, the sufficiency rating here, we have the Jamesville Bridge is over 62.
So that's the one, that's the best shaped bridge?
And I have an asterisk by the Johnson Bridge sufficiency rating. That still has, it posted at 5 ton, before we did the splice retrofit. So when I go back in and change that, either to the LRFR or the LFR, that sufficiency rating will bump up quite a bit.
Does the, whether we do LFR or LRFR, does that sufficiency rating change between the two?
It will.
Okay.
The LFR, when we restrict the posting more, that will reduce the sufficiency rating.
Okay. So that helps in big grants and?
Yep.
Just so everybody knows, what's Johnson Bridge posted for now, what's Fleeg Bridge posted for right now?
That's column number three on your sheet.
Yeah, just so.
Is.
They don't have the sheet on here.
Yeah, Stone Church, the current weight restriction is single unit 14, combination 24. Jamesville, the current weight restriction, single unit 24, combination 40. Johnson Bridge, and this is after the splice retrofit, the current weight restriction, or excuse me, this was before the splice retrofit, was 24, 40. And the Fleegs Bridge, current weight restriction is 24 ton for a single unit and 33 ton for a combination.
Is this public knowledge?
So Mike said on Johnson Bridge, after we did the splice retrofit, it is posted at that 24, 32 right now, which is the LRFR.
So that current is not?
That's what it was before the splice retrofit.
Have you got more copies of this set for the public?
I have two more copies here.
Gary, certainly everything that we do is public information. That is some information that Clark Engineering is offering to you as a starting point for you guys to do something. My fear, if you just started passing that out, is that's a sort of a starting point prioritization, and people might take that and run with it and say, well, this is the third priority bridge, and that's not a decision that you guys have made yet, so I would be reluctant. It's not a secret, I'm not trying to hide it from anybody, but that's just kind of a draft that we provided to you guys, and I would think for your guys' benefit, you might want to look at that and really, let's think about that a little bit before we start passing that out.
So you want it to stay secret then?
Well, I don't want it to stay secret, I don't like to, it just could be misleading. If you guys pass that out, it could be like it comes from you guys, you just want to be crystal clear that this is a starting point recommendation from Clark Engineering that needs to be filtered through a whole lot of local judgment. Like, we don't know if there's a feedlot right there, or if we could have a township bridge that we've rated very lowly because it's on a lower volume township road, but you guys know that there's a feedlot around the corner, or an ethanol plant is across that people cut through to go to the ethanol plant, and that's a higher priority bridge, so you might upset some people and put some misinformation out.
Okay, could, the copies that you're going to give me, could you put that on there, that this is just a starting point, and it's just an estimate then, so that then they totally understand?
Yeah.
Transparency is what we're after.
I agree, yeah, and we're not, certainly not trying to hide anything from you guys.
So then, if you could give me sheets with that, then people can ask me, or everybody here wants one, they can see it too. Because if it's public knowledge, they're entitled to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's probably the best way to do it, is just to call it a draft. It's not, it's not final until you guys decide what's final. That's just the beginning, something for you guys to, it's the dartboard for you guys to throw at.
This is the starting point of this conversation, just like you're saying, and we need to figure as a community and as a county where we want to go, because we definitely don't have money to replace all four of these in one year, so we got to get an idea.
And there's, really, this is just the Jim River Bridges we came prepared to talk about today, as I mentioned to Dan, we were talking a little bit before. You know, there's, what we look at is your whole county system, is sort of the next important system, your paved roads, obviously your collectors that get people from town to market, that kind of thing. That's the next one, and we can look at those in one category, but we go from four bridges to 50 bridges, and we go to the next one, you go to the township bridges, and we go to 100 bridges. So it's harder to talk in the detail in a setting like this, but we do have some presentations we can give you on those two. And at that point, once you guys have kind of digested all of that, to me, that's when you can start, really start to think about some of these priorities. What are your top priorities on the township level? What are your top priorities on the county level? What are your top priorities on the Jim River Bridges, which are county level?
Sure.
And then I think you guys can come together and deliberate on that and make some good decisions.
Question. On the BIG score, which of the weight restrictions do they use to calculate that score?
So right now, I have the LRFR weight restriction in there.
And is that required by the state to use that?
To use the LRFR?
Yeah.
No, it is not.
Okay.
Whatever we have posted, whatever we're using, we have to use it for the BIG score.
Okay, gotcha.
I got a hypothetical question. Johnson Bridge or the Fleeg Bridge, somebody comes across there with the double trailers loaded with rock, and they've got permits, and they happen to miss the road, they're carrying 120, 30,000 gross weight, the higher patrol just happened to see them, who gets the money for the fine? Not the county, is it?
I'm not sure who gets.
Yeah.
I think the state gets money, but I don't know that to be the case, but I've heard that, I've heard that stated in a very similar setting.
That's what I was told when that milk truck went across the Fleeg Bridge, that $25,000 fine, and everybody said, well, gee, you'll have $25,000 to fix the roads up. Nope, that goes to the state.
That doesn't go very far to replace a bridge.
No.
I had some questions for you guys too, and I know you're not prepared to talk about the inspections, but how often are you guys inspecting these bridges with the snoopers trucks like you did the other ones? How often is that taking place as of right now?
Fleegs Bridge is on an annual inspection. Every year, we look at that one. The other three are every two years.
Every two years. Is that sufficient, in your opinion, as an engineer, to do that? I know we had a situation with Johnson Bridge where we wish we would have had more inspections, and we might have identified this sooner. Would annual inspections with the bridges in this type of condition be beneficial or not beneficial in your expert opinion?
I don't think it's necessary, in my opinion, to go to an annual basis right now on the other three.
Okay.
We certainly could if it.
Sure. We just don't want to get in the situation like we were in Johnson Bridge where it was, you know, closed down for as long as it was, and we did, the county spent a lot of money on repairs and had to go back and tear up the, well, you know, tear up the decking that we just laid down. It's an extra expense for the county, and the way our budget is, certainly before we do any major work on a bridge, I think one of the first things should be an inspection, so we're not tearing up the work that we just did to repair it. So I don't know what the other commissioners think about that. What is an inspection with a snoopers truck run for one of these smaller bridges?
Just to rent the snoopers truck for a day is 1,500 bucks.
Okay.
And that's just for the snoopers truck.
Sure.
And one of these will take all of a day to inspect with that, and we have three people out there on the snoopers truck doing these inspections, so.
But it doesn't take very long to, you know, $1,500, sales in comparison to it being a bridge being closed down for months, or having to redo a bunch of work that we've already did. I don't know how the other commissioners.
Yeah, I don't know that I think we need to move them to annual inspections, but certainly if there's going to be any major work done, I would say we.
Any major work, we do an inspection, just that's first thing? Yeah, 1,500 bucks is certainly a lot of tax dollars, but I, you know, it's almost like having insurance, you know, you hope you never need it, and I think it'd be money well-spent. Did you have some thoughts on that, Sherri?
Yeah, you certainly have to cost justify it, and if you're not recommending, we do that every year, I certainly wouldn't recommend it on my part.
Before we do any major work, you think that would be appropriate?
Oh, before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll definitely happen. As we were starting to work for the county, these projects got identified by Brian Gusted, and he developed these projects, but we had never inspected these bridges, and I don't know that they had ever had a snoopers truck inspection. That's where, you know, like some of the crack that was found, that stuff I don't think had been identified prior to that. So there was a little bit of, in retrospect, maybe we should have done a lot more looking at those bridges because we had never looked at them before. But that's pretty consistent with what we're doing. If you see something that has a problem, or we identify a problem that could happen again, then you start increasing the frequency of those inspections. These bridges are, it's sort of classic slow deterioration, they're just getting older, we're not seeing signs of something traumatic, like a crack forming or something, that is more critical, will make you want to look a little more often.
Are you engaged in any projects with the county right now as far as applying for big grants or doing any redesigns or any of that? Can you give us an update on where you're at?
Yeah, we, the county just submitted for two preservation projects. Those were due January 2 of this year.
Okay.
I don't have those.
You know which ones you have?
There's one north of Utica on a county paved road that we're looking to seal up the deck, the same thing that we did to these other three, prolong the life. And then there's, the other one is up in the northeast corner. I don't have a structure number for you right now. That one is also on a county paved road where we're putting that polymer chip steel, the black stuff on the deck to prolong the life. Those are the two big grants.
Okay.
That we have sent in. We won't know if, the county doesn't know if they receive that grant until, it's usually late April.
Okay.
With Stone Church and Fleegs Bridge, have those already got big grants for those?
No.
They have not, neither one of them?
Oh, they, so Stone Church, Jamesville and Johnson, we just completed the big grants for those.
So with Stone Church, with that grant, what did you, what did you do with it and did it, just explain, I guess, what you did with the big grant for the Stone Church Road?
For Stone Church, we put the polymer chip steel on the deck, to seal the deck. We also painted the ends of the girders underneath the open joints to prevent corrosion and section loss of those girders. We're looking to prolong the life of that bridge. It did not affect the weight restrictions at all.
Okay. So the one that we haven't done a big grant on is Fleegs Bridge?
Yep.
And that has, well, just tell us a little bit and tell the audience about the situation with the Fleegs Bridge, I guess it's, it has some issues with it, does it not?
The Fleegs Bridge, structurally, it is, like, it's very good, structurally. The reason why it's on annual inspection is there's a big scour problem at the southeast corner, it's eating away at the bank. So we check on that every year. But structurally, the Fleegs Bridge is a pretty good bridge.
Adam, just for public knowledge, would you tell the public how many bridges are in Yankton County?
Eighty-five, somewhere right in there.
Eighty-five? That's just so the public has an idea of what they know we've got to deal with.
Is there any other issues with Fleegs Bridge? I know there's a lot of crushed rock in there, what is that doing? Is that for the scouring out of the pylons then? Is that still an issue, or has that been resolved?
No, the riprap is doing its job, there's no major scour problems around the columns.
Right now, I guess, the next flood, right?
Right. There's also some tree debris under there, from what I recall.
Okay.
Caught on some of the columns, that could become an issue with scour in the future if that's not removed.
Is there any plan to remove that, or have you?
I'm not sure if there is or not.
Mike's nodding, says yes.
Yes, Mike says yes.
So we're going to get that out, hopefully before spring? Okay.
Any other questions on the Jim River Bridges?
You could just kind of, in closing, you guys have asked a couple, you guys have, two of you have asked a couple of these questions, but I think it's important, if, this is based on a conversation that three or four of us from Clark Engineering, Mike and Brian had, and we came up with these priorities. So if you guys want to adjust these, maybe you've got these in your head a little bit, and we can provide more information if you want to look at some inspection reports and stuff too, but this would be an opportunity for you guys to take a look at those. We've got Fleegs as number two, if you feel like that's the first one. Fleegs is obviously the higher ADT, considerably higher ADT. I know when we did the Stones, and some of the reasons that Stones moved up, a little bit lower condition, and if we were to lose that one, the. And if we were to lose that one, the detour is terrible, as I recall. It would be really bad. So that was some of the rationale into that and you think that never happens. A couple of years, probably eight, 10 years ago, we started posting a bridge in Moody County and telling them they needed to move on it and they were. They were budgeting and planning and doing some long-range planning and we had it programmed. We were just starting design and we closed the bridge because one of the girders collapsed. And they were not ready for that. So that's one of those things we always look at too, is what is the impact if something actually does happen? These are all old bridges and something could happen that we're not anticipating.
Can you, we'll just start with Stone Church. What would be recommendations? What would be our options? I mean, would, I'm just looking at the numbers. I'm assuming if we wanted to get that opened up to legal loads, you're talking to a whole new bridge. What would be recommendations for repair, I guess? And what would that get us weight-wise?
Yeah, I think at this point, there really is no, the work that was done on it was to, these, all these bridges were built from 1952 to 1962, so all really kind of in the same window. The costs of these are all two, what's an average cost of one of these?
Three and a half to four million. I mean, these are 400.
Obviously, these are going to be, obviously you want to get funding for those, but you can't get, there's only so much funding you can get out of the big program. You're not going to be able to build all these in a few years. So as we visited about that, we started thinking about, okay, well, let's just, okay, let's do one every five years for 20 years or something along those lines to start spreading these out. And then, you know, whenever those come to the end of their service life, they'll be spread out a little better, be easier for some future generation to deal with. So that was some of our thought keeping is maybe one of these, you want to start thinking about moving on in the next five years and then look at the next five years to do another one. So the one that we pick that you guys might prioritize and say, I think this is probably the one we should do next. We don't want to, the load rating that we choose to put, the lower the load rating, the higher your big score, the more likely you can get funding. We don't necessarily, and so it's a dual-edged thing. We want to keep the load rate, the posting down so we can get better points on the funding competition. But if we know we're going to replace it in a short time, we really don't need to protect it. So we can maybe go to the little more aggressive posting. So those are some decisions that you guys can think about too. So in order to make some of those decisions on what, for us to give you good recommendations on what you want to post that or what your options are, it would really be helpful if you guys could give a lot of thought. I'm not asking to do it today, but to really give some thought on the order that you think those need to be done. And in particular, those, it doesn't matter the one we're going to do in 15 or 20 years, those can be switched later. Which one do you think is the most important one, maybe the second most important one? And then we can talk with you about some posting strategies for those.
Back to the 85 bridges in Yankton County, how does that compare with the other 66 counties in the state?
More than average?
I would say more than average, yeah.
We're like number two? We're like number two, I think, for total number of bridges, including?
No, not even close.
No?
Minnehaha's 200, Lincoln County's 150, Brown County's 150. There's quite a few of them over 100, right?
Was Brian counting the culverts then too? Because I know he had at one point said something about number two.
Yeah, I think he, I think you have, I think he said 300 of the smaller ones?
Yeah.
That we don't inspect, we don't count those. So that might be what he was going after there.
Clarification.
For the bridge improvement grants, if we've already got a bridge improvement grant for Stone Church, are we able to get another, say we hypothetically, we want to replace that one in five years? Is there a time limit that the state will say, you got a grant three years ago, you can't get another one for that bridge?
Nope.
And then the strategy with the big grant, from what I've read, and you guys would know more, is some counties are actually paying more than their 20% to, you know, some of the bigger counties that can afford it, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not as easy as just applying for it and getting it. We're going to have to pony up at least 20%. And Fleet's Bridge, what's a replacement on something like that?
I mean, it's going to be right around that three and a half to four million would be my guess.
Do you think Fleet's, or you think Fleet's will be even more than that?
It might be with all the scour issues that we got going on there, but.
Scour may require a longer bridge.
That's a good point though with the, the big scores that I have here, that's calculated with the county doing their minimum 20% match. For every 10%, you add to that. So if the county does a 30% match, you get another 3.33 points onto this big score.
Okay.
Up to 50% match is the maximum. So if you go half-half, you'll get an extra 10 points.
Is that formula posted on the state page here?
It is.
If I can find it.
Yeah, I can send that.
The bridge grants are getting more and more competitive every year from what I've read and I know the smaller communities are having a difficult time getting big grants because they can't pony up millions of dollars for a bridge where the larger ones can. So if you want it done sooner, you're going to have to pay more, basically, that's what it amounts to.
Yeah, the last few years to get a replacement grant, the big score needed to be high 50s.
Yep.
High 50s.
Wow.
So you guys are sitting, you know, Fleet's is at 47. It's hard for us to predict that the big program is new to everybody, so I hope that we're starting to clip off some of the bad ones and maybe some of those, that threshold of score will start, and it has come down a little bit. The first year was really high. They were all well over 60. So maybe that will happen. What I always sort of suggest is don't say this is the bridge we're going to do and we're going to apply for a grant in this year. And I wouldn't say you have the luxury of applying, you kind of take it when you get it. As painful as it is, reorganize your budget that year to deal with it if you have to. So I would, you know, when you guys get a handle on which one you want to do, take a year and you guys still got a lot of stuff to look at there. There may be some stuff on the county system that's a smaller, less expensive bridge that you're in a better position. We know we can get something, well, let's get that taken care of then. We know we've got a pretty good chance of getting some funding for that bridge. Let's do that one and let this one stew a little bit and see what happens. But, you know, at some point in the next five years, you just want to start applying and you can apply to your 20%, see where you come out. If you don't even come close, maybe the next year you offer a 30% match. You can do, which some counties that have a little more wherewithal, and I'm not suggesting you are one of them or aren't, some counties that have a little more wherewithal is you can do what they call plans in hand. If you pay us to do the design and get some things ready, they consider that, you know, the plan-ready or shovel-ready type of a project and that gets you another 10 points.
Yep.
So, I mean, you add 10 points to 44.6, you're in your mid-50s, you're starting to get up to where you need to be so you can front the money. And you can still use that as part of your match in the long run, you just have to front the money. So there's some things like that you can think about. And we'll have all kinds of conversations and can start to strategize about how you do that after we kind of get through those three meetings of those three different kind of categories of bridges and get that all in your head and get some prioritizations for each of those down. You can merge them all together into your master prioritization list.
So a question on the plans in hand. So if we give you 100,000 to get a plan in hand today and then we get the big grant, does that 100,000 count toward our?
Match.
Match?
Yes.
You see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, no. Or to an increase in, you reduce the cost of the bridge, so you're technically paying
Right, because you've already outlaid that cash.
You're paying a higher percentage of the total cost, so it's part of like, you could say it's part of your 20% match or you can use that to increase your 20% match.
Right, so if we go ahead and do that versus just saying, well, instead of 20, we'll just do 30 and you get the same points on your big?
Right.
So I'm just seeing where they're equal.
The thing that the people, so you're making a good point, that the thing that the people at DOT really like about plans are ready is, one of the things that happens is they got all, they got this big pot of money and it's, you know, it's not, it's not just sitting there in the bank waiting for us to ask for it. They're managing their cash, right, just like your treasurer does. She doesn't have all of their assets of the county sitting in a checking account. So what always happens, especially on big projects like this, is they get started and then they don't meet the schedule and it's a problem for them. You're being really predictable by having your plan, okay, they're going to be ready to go, no problems. When we want to build this two years from now, they're going to be ready to go. We're not going to have to spend the next two years making sure they get to where we need them to be. So there's some advantage, I think, just in their mindset of you guys are ready to go and you're committed.
Yeah, skin in the game.
Yeah, exactly.
And one thing I want to add here, the first grant in the replacement process is that PE grant, the preliminary engineering, that's where we do the survey and hydraulics size the bridge. That, we have, we do not have that grant on any four of these yet. That grant application is due August 1st of this year. So that is the first step at getting a bridge replaced if you're going to go the big improvement grant process.
Or for any other county bridges you wanted to do or a township bridge that you felt like was a priority you wanted to do, that August 1st is a big day.
You work out with a lot of other counties, they're in a similar situation, I imagine, where they're having to update their bridges for the modern roads.
I would lump you guys, like Brown County, which is where Aberdeen is, Lincoln County, the south side of Sioux Falls, I would kind of, Beetle County, which is where Huron is, I would lump you guys kind of in that. And I don't mean to suggest, you have a better tax base, you have a little more wherewithal than maybe a heavily rural county in western South Dakota. But they're doing, they're doing a little bit of the buy-up. They're definitely buying plans or plans in hand, doing a little bit of paying more because they can. Those groups also have some bigger bridges.
Yeah.
Brown County's got some really long Jim River bridges up there.
They've actually.
They don't have as much water in the Jim River up there, but there's just much grade across the whole county, so the bridges are really long.
They've actually removed a bridge up there not that long ago, some of the abandoned ones, so.
Those are always things you can think about, they're difficult decisions. Is, do you need four bridges on the Jim River? I mean, obviously you guys know that those are fraught with peril because you always affect somebody when you do something like that. But there are, how many state bridges?
Two.
Two state bridges in the county and, you know, looking at some of the, we had that conversation and none of us.
Actually, three. Is there three?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three, sorry.
We had a little bit of that conversation and Brian and Mike went, no, we're not, I think these are all needed, was sort of their impression, but again, those are your decisions. If that's something you guys wanted to take up. When you get into the county sides with the smaller ones, maybe you make a decision about, not a county, I'm sorry, a township bridge. That's when we see people making the decision, do we really need a bridge on a minimum maintenance road that has, you know, five cars a day during harvest and never the rest of the year? Those are tough choices.
Did you have their estimated replacement costs on all four of these bridges on this sheet? I know they're by structure number, but.
There's one missing.
Could you get us, we wouldn't hold it to you, but just the estimated replacement cost for each one of these bridges?
Yeah.
Today roughly? And then the second part is if we do a shovel-ready plan with you guys and we don't, we don't use it for five years, is that plan going to still be good or would there be serious updating that need and it'd be additional money down the road or?
When you're trying to finish a set of plans and actually put them out for a bid letting, the DOT's standards, which you would think we have it figured out, but it's ever evolving and changing. So they can, if they sit on the shelf very long, they have a shelf life. They have an expiration date for sure. And even a year can constitute, usually not like a redesign or something, but it's updating standard plates and updating some environmental notes, you know, the environmental criterias will change year to year based on the DOT's latest negotiations with the Corps of Engineers or EPA or something. So some of that stuff will change and there's a cost to that, there is a risk to that. That's a very good point. They're not, they don't last forever.
Yeah, we would, we'd hate to do a shovel-ready plan for, say, 100,000 and then it'd be no good three years down the road. That'd be a risk we'd have to take, obviously, but we'd like to know, there wouldn't be significant changes, obviously, a few updates, but if that plan.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
What would be an estimate for a PE for any one of these bridges and then a shovel-ready plan?
So the survey and hydraulics for a Jim River bridge like this, we're probably in that $45,000 range.
Okay.
And then, what was your, what was the second one?
And then what would be fees to, for the design?
For the design?
I mean, we're not going to hold.
Yeah, 130, 120, 130, somewhere in there for the design.
So we're looking at figure 175 to 200,000?
Just for the.
Before we break ground?
Right, correct.
That's a little under 10% of the cost for some of these.
And like the PE grant, you guys would only be paying 20% of that.
Right.
Most of those PE grants, when they apply, you usually get them, especially for these scores here. So I would suggest doing the 80/20, your minimum 20% match.
You can split that up, you can do 20% for the PE and then we could maybe do 50 on the.
Yeah, there's two separate grants, yep.
Does the PE grant, the money we spend for that count toward what we're spending, toward the big grant?
You paid 20% of that grant.
Do you guys have a punch card? We do a couple bridges with you, we get the third one free or something, is it?
Yeah, no.
I wish.
It does, it does work that way. I mean, the more you do, certainly the more familiar you become with things, the easier the processes get easier of working with you guys. A lot of the decisions, you guys are actually coming a lot farther than I maybe thought you guys would. A lot of those decisions about whether we spend, put an extra 10% of a match in or we pay to have the plans in hand, really comes down to when we sit down and you have that whole prioritization list of those three different systems all in one split and we'll look at that and go, ugh, in five years, we're really going to have a pinch that we need to accelerate a couple of these or we're going to fall behind, we might lose a bridge, might have to close a bridge or something like that. You'll kind of start to see those. And that's usually when we'll see a Beetle County go, we're going to pay you to do the plans or we're going to apply for this one with an extra 20%. And they know, you know, if they're at 55 or if they're at 45, 47, we want to get to that high 50s, we'll probably get it. They'll do one or the other to get them to that number where they think they're going to get it. So there's a little bit of a game. You know, if you really need to build it this year because it's going to, there's other ones that are coming down the pipe that you can't, you can't afford for it to keep slipping. That's when we're seeing people take those more aggressive measures. You know, frankly, some of these, if you're, it doesn't hurt to get the grant application ready. Adam puts them together, they don't take that long. We don't charge you to do the grant applications, they just go in. So you can apply, see where you're at. You know, if you get one at 20%, the thing you never know is you never know who's applying. They keep saying it's keep applying, keep applying. You never know when it's going to happen that maybe there's a down year and maybe it does drop down closer to 50, maybe you guys would get one. So we, most people just start applying. If you know this is one of your next, especially like a big priority bridge, start applying at a lower. When it starts to become, okay, if we don't get this done pretty soon, it's going to start to affect other things on our priority list, then you start getting more aggressive with that. So I wouldn't necessarily say you need to figure that out this year, but we need to be working on it.
Happens if we apply, don't have fun, we get it and we want to, we don't want to follow through with it.
You don't have to accept a grant, ever. It's no different than any other grant, but I would not recommend, I would not recommend doing that. You want to aggravate the people at DOT, do that.
For the audiences.
Be prepared, is what you're saying.
Benefit, they have listed here Stone Church estimated replacement at 3.2 million, Johnson Bridge at 3.7 million. The other two bridges are not listed.
Yes, we do not have cost estimates for those because they're not eligible for replacement. They're not structurally deficient.
Gotcha, okay.
But they're going to be right in there, sorry.
Yeah, soon enough, they'll be in there and I'm sure they'll be in that range. The other question, for some reason I have in my mind, that you have a limit of big funds over like a five-year rolling, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's four or $5 million every four years.
Every four years, so about a million bucks a year. So that certainly has a play in our plan for when these bridges, like you said, spacing them out every four or five years, because these will eat up most of our funds that we're eligible for.
We'll need to start budgeting money soon for that too, at the county levels.
The people, the people, the counties who are getting close to having to worry about reaching that max are the people who are doing 40% matches pretty consistently. Our clients, it's the people with big bridges like you guys have pending, big, high-dollar pending needs, and they're doing high matches that are actually getting to that. Otherwise, there really isn't enough funds for most people to be concerned. If you're gonna stay down around eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty, you're probably not gonna get that on most of your little bridges. You get down to a, a normal a hundred-foot bridge or something, a little, a little shorter, they get, they get cheaper, get out of the water, get single span, you don't have substructures in the water, bent, or piles, the columns in the water, those, those get real expensive when those bridges get long.
How much big grant funding have we had in the last four years then that we, if we did a bridge next year, we wouldn't be able to get, do you, do you have those numbers? How much we've received for the last several bridges?
I think, so the three that we just completed on Stone Church, Jamesville and Johnson, the total was right around seven hundred thousand, I believe. There's a couple change orders in there too, so it might be up to seven fifty.
That was the grant funding received on those?
That was the total, that was the total cost, so it'd be eighty percent of that is the actual grant that you got. To my knowledge, I think that's only three that Yankton County has had.
Okay.
And then we have the two pending right now that we'll find out end of April.
Do I understand the county would have to make the decision on, on which rating we wanted to do and what that would do to our rating, sufficiency rating? Is there any repercussions for going seasonal load lim, or seasonal ratings on some of this? Let's say spring fertilizer time and harvest time, we go with the LFR and the rest of the year we go LRFR?
Yeah, that's, that's where you're, you're equating two different philosophies of, of load rating, you know, your, your spring load limits. The, the spring load limits are when you're seeing those, that you're, that kind of what you're getting at when they come on and off, that, that's, I don't think that would be really well received. We're already, we're already wandering into like, the narrative and the way we presented this to you might not make somebody at DOT really think that that's exactly the way we should do that, but it's, it's not intended to be something we move back and forth on. I think if we're making our decision-making based upon, we're gonna replace this bridge in five years, we're gonna let it go to that lower rating. So as I, as I said earlier, I think, to me, I would like to see you pick your priorities and then we'll have a discussion about those bridges and where we, and let you guys make a, like I said, it can be both. If you're gonna replace one in five years, there's no reason to post it higher, or to not post it higher because we're gonna replace it in five years and we're not gonna wear that, you know, again, these load, these postings are not safety, they're, they're longevity of the bridge. We know we're gonna replace it in five years or our plan is replacing it in five years. Giving up surface life twenty years from now, what difference does it make? So, so we can go to that higher number. But our big score, the lower, the lower, so once you post it, we wanna keep the posting down until we get a big grant, then we can raise back up.
Right, yeah. Do you, is there an estimate on what, what that would do to your big score? Take Fleegs.
We can look at those.
Yeah, can I get those numbers from you?
Are you guys, are you guys kind of in general agreement that Fleegs and, and Stone Church are, are the two top priorities? And maybe we can create a narrative and, and send a memo to Mike and he can forward that to you guys with a discussion on that and you guys can think that through and maybe make the decision between those two?
Right.
Well, I, I think we need to have a, a little more, bit more thorough discussion about truck routes in our county because we have a potential ethanol facility coming in. And if we want trucks to get from the east side of the county to the west side of the county, which bridge are they going to take? And in my mind, that's Johnson Bridge right now, unless they're going to go clear down to, to fifty or Fleegs, or if they're going to go clear up to forty-six and down eighty-one. So that one kind of puts a little kink, I guess, in easily picking where your priority is.
One of the things we'll do is, we've got a, a bunch of maps, we've got maps that'll show posting, we've got maps that'll show sufficiency rating as well. They're big and awkward to be useful, but we'll, we'll get some maps put together and so you guys can, you know, throw that down and kind of look at that in, in your spare time, because, you know, nobody wants to do anything more than analyze bridge ratings. But we can put something like that together so you guys can sit down and start looking at some of that stuff you're talking about.
And it comes.
What are, what's a key, we need a, we need a nice east-west route across this part of, across the northern half of the, of the county without postings and we gotta ensure that that, that's maintained, yeah.
And the next question in there is, does the road that feeds the bridge support the truck as well? And is that where we need to be putting more of our money?
Some pavement management system stuff. We started working with.
Potentially sacrificing somewhere else.
And I think Mike's got some interest in that.
You know, really, we wanna be able to focus the, the vehicle flow hopefully to the state highways as much as we can and not, especially with a, a major facility and the state roads and bridges are maintained in that, that fashion, I guess that would be my, the way I would look at it is, a lot of that, as much traffic as we can goes on the state highway system and the county system is mostly for local traffic. We wouldn't, in my opinion, we wouldn't wanna be in the business where, where incentivizing people to take a county system that aren't from the county. That's, I guess, how I would look at it, so.
Lincoln County runs into that some, they, they build their roads so nice that I think they draw truck traffic away from some of the state highways that aren't in as nice a condition. They've actually talked about that, that, that's a concern to them, that we're becoming the preferred truck route and that's, that's, you want the state to be a primary system and you're supplementing it where there aren't highways, our state highways to, to, to carry that load, yeah.
We, we ran into that on Deer Boulevard, that's the next one that hits you under here, so. Any other commissioners have anything they'd like to add to, to this? It's definitely gonna be a big discussion on where we're gonna go. Did we want to have them look up anything else? I guess I'd like replacement costs on all of these, just rough ballpark, so we know where we're sitting at. If Fleegs is gonna be three times as much as another bridge, that's certainly gonna change it in my opinion, if it's roughly similar. Just looking at the traffic counts, there's a lot of people who use that bridge every day and that's gonna be a real tough decision to not have that bridge.
Yeah, so right now I have cost estimates for the four Jim River bridges. I have the weights of the design trucks, the two different design trucks. A draft, I'm gonna put draft behind this sheet here and send it to you guys so you can publish it, hand it out to whoever you want. What else am I supposed to be providing you?
What the different LRFR versus LFR, what that does to the sufficiency rating or the big score.
Draw configuration, send that pamphlet.
I guess I'm just looking at some of these, well, Fleegs is the one I mostly zero in on. If it's structurally sound and we're not close to a big score, use it, I guess, Mike.
Yeah, the one thing, like, it's structurally sound, but it, it is pretty narrow too. It's kind of uncomfortable going across there in a pickup truck.
It kind of self-polices it though, I mean, you, you don't have two semis crossing at the same time, you see one coming and you slow down and, so that's one reason I'm not overly concerned with that bridge, I guess. The scouring would be my, I guess, concern, like your opinion on what, is that advancing towards the columns? Is it under control? Is it cause for concern? Is it five years out, ten years out? What do you see in there?
Right now, it's, it's not cause of concern for the actual structure. It's just eating away at that southeast bank and that continues.
Right.
And we've, we've had not a lot of flooding in the past year, you know, five years ago when we had flood after flood, that there were significant changes there and that, that's gonna come back. When that does come back on the James River, be sooner than later, I think time will tell with that.
And I can't, I can't really tell you how it's progressing, I've only seen it twice. I've only inspected Fleegs tries, we're fairly, fairly new to the county yet.
Sure.
Do, do we wanna schedule or do you guys wanna get back to us on when, maybe we wanna come back and do the, the county system, which would seem to be the next logical one to do?
Yeah, I think.
Couple weeks or whenever that would work.
What do you guys think? Couple weeks, have them come back?
That would probably be good.
Like, probably not the February 5th meeting, but the one after that, probably.
Second meeting in February?
Is that the third Tuesday?
It should be the third, yeah.
Any, is that?
Yeah, that works for you guys. It'll make time. Get everything prepared.
And, and both of you can come that day?
Okay.
I would do that.
Yeah. Are there any other, besides a bridge improvement grant from the state, are there any other federal programs or anything out there to help with bridges that, I know it might be a long shot to apply for a federal program if it exists, but I think that's something that we'd like to do if, if there are any programs like that.
All right, we, we had an email about, about one not too long ago. That was a federal program and the, there was only three grant applications gonna be submitted in the whole state. And that included the DOT was in on this too. And they, they gave us like three or four weeks to get this, the grant application done. Me and Brian kind of talked about it and said there, there just wasn't enough time and we didn't, we didn't have a clear priority either on which bridges to do. I believe that was only a one-time thing. So I'm not aware of any other federal.
Well, keep us in mind for that, I think we owe it to the taxpayers, if there's a way to get a federal grant for any type of funding, we wanna apply for it and we wanna make that happen.
Don't tell that to the other counties.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing, I, I just say this because Sherry mentioned an ethanol plant, something like that's coming in, there's a couple of grant programs through the DOT that you can use for transportation, they're normally not used on bridges, but you could do some road work. If, one of them is if you create a certain number of jobs in a certain area, you can get so much funding and, and those are not super competitive, you can usually get something. They, they sort of, you identify a project, they tell you how much they're gonna give to you towards it. They normally, they, coming out of the state, they're normally looking at that, it's like if you needed to put some turn lanes in on a county road because there's a new ethanol plant there, that they would try to fund that, but you can get some improvements like that. So if you've got something, any sort of a development-driven need on your part, there are a couple programs through DOT that you can get some funding through and a good, the best source for you guys better than us would be third district here in town, the, the planning district would, would apply for those grants for you. I'm assuming you guys work with those pretty, those guys pretty regularly.
Yeah, if you, when you come back in a couple of weeks, if you could give us a little update on, on that as well, if you, you have, and, yeah, anytime we can get outside money for the county, it's a good, good thing for us, so. Anything else from any other commission?
We'll look forward to seeing both of you next time in, in February.
Yep. Thank you, very much. Any discussion on this with the commission? Anything to discuss?
Not right now.
Moving on, next item on the agenda, item number four, load limits and road milling bid. Mike, welcome.
Well, the load limits, I just need approval or, I guess I have two options for you guys. Last year, we did six ton per an axle. And then there was a permit process for anything over eighty thousand. I guess, do you guys wanna keep it that way or would you, I guess I got information on, on that also for, for the permits. There was one, one permit for gravel pit belt feeder, you only had to travel a mile and a half. Four permits for, were for a hay grinder, four permits were for concrete pump truck, the concrete pump truck, all four trips totaled five miles.
I thought they had it five ton for a while, remember all the controversy we had over that?
I believe it was all six.
It was six, because it was seven before.
It was seven.
So they went from seven to six.
It was seven before.
So we had a total of nine, nine permits given out last year.
And.
And were those per trip or was that a year thing?
No, it was all per trip.
Per trip.
Everybody, anytime, like the hay grinder, whenever he had to go somewhere, he had to come get a permit.
And how much would that permit cost, figure?
It's forty-five cents per ton per mile.
It was a minimum of a hundred, plus your.
Yeah.
Forty-five cents. Total dollar amount generated from the permits last year was seven hundred and thirty dollars, roughly. So it was not a big dollar amount, but then I look at the number of permits we handed out to or gave out. So we can go either way, if you wanna just do straight, no permits and just six tons per axle, or if we wanna continue on like we did last year.
Were those the two, those are the two options?
That's the two options I had, unless, unless we wanted to do something else.
No, I just wanted to, so just so everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
Last year, it was a minimum of a hundred dollars for over eighty thousand pounds, less than eighty-six thousand pounds, forty-five cents per ton per mile, additional twenty-five dollars for every two thousand pounds over eighty-six thousand.
Correct.
So.
And then I, I guess, not to cut you off there, but the heaviest axle, because they have to, on the permit, they have to put how many, how many tons per e, each axle, what each axle will weigh, and the heaviest was just under eight ton.
Okay.
And that was on that belt feeder, which is not gonna happen every year.
Right.
And then the concrete pump truck.
Okay. I'd like to just kind of continue discussions on this. I don't know that I'm ready for a decision today. It seems to me that LTAP mentioned something about potentially losing funding if we give overload permits, and I think we need to look into that.
My memory said we were okay as long as they were not divisible loads. If we were giving exceptions for a truck carrying cattle.
Cattle or grain.
Because you could take a cow off.
Right.
That's my recollection. I, I inquired with LTAP and have not received confirmation on that and I haven't had a chance to look up the state law.
Yep, and then, and the permits were only for non-divisible loads.
Sure.
Right, and I, I thought we were okay if we did non-divisible, but again, that's probably good. Anyway, is it all right if I ask people in the audience, do you have some input on this? Because I'm sure we have some haulers? No? Louis, you wanna say anything?
I can't hear you.
Louis, do you wanna say anything?
No?
No? So, that's fine.
I think, I think best case scenario is we, we get out in, in the public that, hey, load limits are coming and if you got something you need to haul, it's better to do it now or you're gonna have to wait. If we can, you know, have the least amount of non-divisible permits, I think is better because they're hauling the heavy loads when the roads are breaking up and, and damage is happening and we wonder, you know, did that seven hundred dollars, how much damage did, did we cause? Seven thousand dollars damage?
Right.
We're not, we're definitely not breaking even on that, so I'd like to see something maybe advertised in the paper if we could. Load limits are coming, if you got something, you gotta haul, haul it now or you're gonna need to wait. I don't know what the other, what everybody else has.
Probably depends on what the recommendation from LTAP has to, you know, once we get that information, but I think, you know, yeah, people need to know it's coming.
Mike, is there kind of a standard date that you usually put the limits on?
Standard date? No, it, it just depends on the weather. There's been times we've put them on in February and they didn't come off until the end of April, there's been times where we put them on in March and they were off by the end of March.
Sure.
It just depends on, on the frost and the, and the weather, you know.
Is that our call or is the state give us a recommendation on any of that?
That's our call.
What's your recommendation? I'm put you on the spot here.
My recommendation, I guess, either way, it, like you said, that's seven hundred and thirty dollars, did that, that, that didn't pay for all the, you know, a couple loads of asphalt, you know, that's, that's, that's the kicker, you're not, the dollar amount that we generate is not enough to fix if there is problems.
One thing, I talked to a contractor regarding this and, you know, he, he's not too concerned with the dollar amount within reason as far as paying for non-divisible loads. His concern was the process to, to get the application. He's from outside of the county, he does work in the county from time to time and, you know, he said if, if the process was a little easier, people would be more apt to probably apply. I would bet that there's more than nine trucks were hauling over eighty thousand pounds, over six tons per axle, but they didn't wanna go through the hassle of getting the permits. So whatever we can do to make that.
Well, the, the process prior was to come to the office and the secretary would, would fill out the app and.
Sure.
The only other thing would be to do it online, but.
Uh, what about something with, you know, not knowing the miles down to the T, here's five hundred dollars, give me a free pass type of deal? Or, you know, similar to, to fuel, you know, interstate fuel packs and things like that.
Right.
We know you're gonna be working in the county, or we'll limit you to twenty miles or we'll limit you to whatever and, and get some haul routes from them, here's what you want.
Yep. And that was the other thing where it was, you had to have a scheduled haul route also. And that permit was just for one way in, one way out.
Yeah. I guess just something to think about. Whatever we can do to make that process easier, we'll probably be more apt to actually get those permits required instead of just people sneaking by. So...
Do you want to discuss that at the next Tuesday then?
I think we'll have to have that on the next meeting as discussion as well. I don't, I'm not prepared to make a decision today unless anybody else is here.
Well, that and Don's gone and Don's got some history. So I'd appreciate his input too.
Yep.
I think maybe we should do what we can to advertise that load limits are coming. I guess if we put it on the agenda, somebody who's interested in load limits, hopefully will come in and discuss it with us.
Good idea.
All righty. Well, then next I have, I need approval to accept the 2018 bid of Brown County's full reclamation. We piggybacked off that last year. And we can do it again this year with the same price. Just have to have it done before, I think, the 14th.
Do you have copies of that bid, Mike?
You do not, have nothing in your packet?
I don't know if we did packets for this one, did we?
Yeah.
No? Thoughtful.
Yeah.
I will.
I guess...
Is that what this, is this on? Let me take a look. Make an extra copy for the audience.
Mike, do you want to walk the audience through which road you're talking about?
The roads for milling this year would be 449 over there, south of 301 to the Valen Road. There's a four-mile stretch there. We have, we've started hauling gravel on it currently. When the weather allows, we have one mile left of gravel on it. We try to put about four to six inches of gravel over the asphalt. And then the mill will come through and grind it and mix it. And we'll have, should have a proper amount of base then. The other roads are on the five-year plan to do, which for next year would be, or for this year, 2019 would be 295th Street, I believe it is. Be two miles north of 46 on the Mennel Road and then back to the west. There's a three-mile stretch there. It's in pretty tough shape. Same thing, we'll have to haul gravel on it. We already started, there were so many blowouts in the last few years, we, instead of patching with asphalt, we just started patching it with gravel. Then the other, it'd be a six-mile stretch, 448 north of 46 to the county line. That would be the other, the other stretch that we are planning on doing this year. And then 303, our plan is to put that back to hard surface this year. From Johnson, from Wallstown Road to 449.
And how many miles was that, Mike?
That was a total of 10 miles.
So essentially, you're grinding 13 and paving 10 this year. Is that right?
Grinding, grinding 10.
Grinding 10.
And to put back to hard surface would be five and a half.
I got a number on.
Yeah, there'd be the four miles of 449, three miles of 295, and the six miles of 448.
Okay, that's 13.
Ah, sorry.
All right. I knew I had a number on somewhere.
Yep, you're right. I was talking to the guys this morning about what we had to gravel yet. We have to gravel 10.
Oh, got you down. You've got 10 to go. Okay, I got you.
I'm sorry. With the weather the way it is, we can't, stuff's freezing up and it don't lay out. So as soon as the weather breaks, then we'll get back to our 10 miles of graveling left.
Jackhammer gravel out of the back of a dump truck?
Yeah.
How many companies do this and where do these guys come in, cost-wise, I guess?
How many companies do this? As of last time, I believe we only had two other bids.
Okay.
Loisa and then I believe the other one was Pullman.
Okay.
But you'll see there's a $2,500 mobilization fee. That is one time to the county. So like, he's not going to charge us 2,500 to go to each spot.
Okay.
It's just 2,500 to the county.
And I suppose he'll come and just do all of, all 13 miles in one shot?
You've worked with this company before?
Yep, he's, last two years.
Okay.
I know on my calculations there, it comes out to about $16,778 a mile. I don't know if you've looked at the budget numbers. Brian had down 35,000 a mile. But I assume that's a, of course, a cushion and the gravel that we put on.
I was going to say, that's probably taking in the...
What does it cost to gravel a mile for one of these roads?
I knew you were going to ask that. That's the one figure I couldn't, I've been having problems trying to find everything in the computer. I'm still digging, so.
When you find that out, just let us, I think it's good for the public to know that it costs as much to, so we can give them accurate numbers.
Yep.
It's not free, definitely.
No.
What was that to gra, is that in here? Oh, there we go.
Yeah, so roughly, you have, just for the milling cost, you'd have 67,000 on 449, 50,000 on 295, and 100,000 on 448, rough figures, for just the milling. That is not the gravel. And then we were figuring roughly, like to hard surface 303, you're looking at roughly 22,000 a mile. That's without the asphalt. We, there were figures that I'd have to come up with yet for the amount of asphalt.
At the intersections?
At the intersections. Well, like on 301, we asphalted from the top of the hill all the way down to the bridge on the Toma Hill.
Is there anything additionally we can do when we're in this process of grinding up these roads to, to make them a little bit easier for the people traveling? I know in the past, there's been a lot of issues with how rough the roads are and people get in flat tires. Is there anything we can do to make it easier for the people who have to live on that road and endure it?
There is. I don't know if it's cost-effective unless we would do the whole thing in one year. Like, I mean, haul gravel on it, mill it, go back to hard surface, all in one year.
Doesn't it have to sit for a freeze-thaw cycle, whatever?
Does it have to? It doesn't, but it's best because then you're bad spot. Like, on 301 last year, we had two or three spots that showed up where, well, three spots for sure, where we had to dig up about four foot and then we put fabric down and haul new material in, haul the...
Yeah, sure. I guess I'm talking about, I don't, is there anything we can do to smooth it out or anything, grade it, drag it? Is there anything to make it just a little bit easier for the people that live on that road?
We've been trying to, been trying to blade it. I don't want to stir up a bunch of loose stuff, you know, if we don't have to. Because then you've got a lot of loose pebbles on there, then your washboards just become worse quicker. We just try to fix what we have to. The other way to do it, I guess, would be, we could put this base stabilizer in there. Then you're talking, well, your chunks, there'd be less chunks because then they have to mill it another time. And then they blend in this, inject this, it's called Base One, is the product we use. That'll make it hard as a rock. It's like super glue, if you ask me, but...
Do you have a cost estimate for that? Or in your opinion, is it worth?
Base stabilizer, yes, if we're going right into a chip seal. Like last year, that was, that was our process on 301. We went in and tore up about roughly five inches and injected this Base One, is what it's called. Have to water it, inject it, and then relay everything and re-compact it. It's, seems to work good. We have a handful of other gravel roads that we use this stuff on. And it seems to hold up really well.
You don't happen to have an estimate for the cost on that per mile?
Cost on just the material or, or total?
Having to do that.
Everything.
You know, we want to, we want to make it as convenient as possible for people.
For the contractor to inject it and everything?
Yeah. But also if it's cost prohibitive to the county and our tax, then we have to justify that as well.
Then you're, you're talking a $1.95 a square yard.
Oh, that'll add up.
Yeah, you're going to like 36,000 per mile then. So...
I guess my concern with that is if you, if you're putting that in and then you want it to sit through a freeze-thaw, and you have stiffened that base, it's going to hold probably for a while and not do what we want it to do, is to compact down. That would be my concern.
Yeah. Well, but then when we go back to put it to hard surface, we're still going to have to relay it. So you're adding an extra cost.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, extra cost and time, fuel. So that's the only downfall about doing it right away.
Sure, okay.
So we just need to approve this for you today?
Yep, just approve this to piggyback off the Brown County 2018 bid.
Put the amount in the motion. The amount to you?
So the total, we need to add these three numbers together?
No, you just, just approve to go off the bid.
Okay. Is that good for you?
Is there an amount on the, I don't say total?
There's no...
No, there's no total. We just got to go off their bid.
Do you want me to add?
Bid amounts.
No, that's fine.
I move to approve, approve the bid for Loisa construction in the amounts of $67,114.65 and $50,335.98 and $100,671.96.
Can, okay, I'm sorry. Can we just, just in case there's a discrepancy there, a small, I'm not talking pick them out, you know, thousand here or there, you know.
Oh, as far as contingency?
Yes. As far, I talked, I talked to the...
Is it 5,000?
Traditionally, what they did, from what I gather, is, you know, I'm new to this, from what I understand, they just approved the bid.
Approved the bid?
The, the main...
As long as we have a motion.
To approve this, to go off a Brown County bid.
What we probably want to do is just approve the grind with layback process and not with the additive injection and layback.
There you go.
Because they've got, they've got...
The middle one?
Yeah.
Because I did talk to Tom Merz as the contractor. I called him three times to make sure I was right on my numbers.
And that's what we'd be doing, is grind with the layback process.
Yes.
We'd have them do that.
Yep.
Can I change my motion, Patty, or should I rescind it?
That's fine, just, yeah.
We haven't got a second.
No, yeah, hold that shit.
All right. We'll try this again. I move to approve the bid from Loisa Construction for grind with layback process dated 2/27/2018.
Off of the ground, County, Brown County bid.
Off the Brown County equipment rental bid.
Yes.
Perfect.
Right.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I think this is just, you know, continues in our process of doing what we can as a commission to listen to the citizens and try to get these roads in as good a shape as we can. So, any other further discussion?
But you'll let us know if it's an astronomical...
Oh, yeah. No, like I said, I talked to the contractor two or three times. I called him because I wanted to be pretty accurate, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you something else or later?
About what? What do you have?
About the snow removal when I, at the beginning of the meeting. Can you stay for...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead and do that quick.
I just wanted to know how you were doing wearing two hats.
Well, it depends on which day. Sometimes it's three, four hats. I...
Tell the audience what your regular title is.
Well, my regular title is Operation Supervisor. I'm in charge of scheduling the guys and making sure things are getting done. And, well, now Carl is gone, secretary, and also the superintendent. And then we are short of guys. So like with snow removal, I am out in a truck.
That's, that's what I wanted to bring up. And I just thought of it here a little bit ago. And I didn't talk to the commissioners. I just thought about it right now. Most everybody knows that I had heart surgery last month and doctor gave me the okay to do anything I want. I just had my Class A CDL license renewed for another five years. I've had it for two decades. I plowed snow for the government in Chicago, equipment operator. I'll make you a little offer. I know you're short and I know what it feels like to be short. You call, if you want to call me, if it's okay with everybody else, I'll plow snow for you till the spring. I won't charge you a dime. I'll do it for free. I've already set a precedence for working for the county for free. When I worked for four years as Deputy Sheriff, Sheriff Dave Hunoff. So there's not a problem there. Only thing you have to do is put me on the insurance probably. Now, maybe it won't snow anymore. Maybe next week we'll get three foot.
Yep.
But I'll help you out. Because I know what it feels like to be short.
Well, it's just, right now, it's, it's tough if you've got a guy on vacation that had a planned vacation or someone's sick, you know.
Yeah. Can't get better than free, can you?
No.
Let's check with the, why don't you check with the state's attorney and see if there'd be any issues with that.
Yeah.
Get back to us at the next meeting if that works for that.
So it's supposed to be cold next week, so probably no snow. But that'll help you out.
That'd be great.
Thank you for everything you're doing, Mike. We really appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda, item number five, resolution for through traffic on Deer Boulevard.
We don't have, Rob's, he's coming back today, so...
Yeah. Rob isn't here. I spoke with him on the phone. He said that all we'd need is a motion to limit through traffic on Deer Boulevard. He has the resolution prepared. If we approve it here, I will sign it. I have an appointment to meet him at 1:30 today. We can get it signed.
What would the sign say? No trucks?
No, no through trucks.
No through trucks.
No trucks.
Yes. And you have those signs ready to go?
They're ready to go. Just wait.
The only thing is, does that no-through trucks, is that going to make a loophole for local guys?
Well, I think if local guys have to use that road, we need to let them. This is, in my opinion, this is just to prevent the 30, 40 trucks a day going south under...
I went there last Tuesday and five, every five minutes, there was a truck in and out.
Sure.
And then after I made phone calls to several companies on Thursday, I was there for almost three hours and there was five trucks. And I talked to every one of them and they all would, said they would cooperate and not use that road. I said, I can't make you, only one guy didn't like it, but...
We still have the laws, the honeybee guy, and church, huh?
Yeah. To be a local, they would have to enter that road from, with, between the no-through truck side. So we should limit that.
There should be a lot of people happy out there that live there.
Yes, definitely.
I think it's important to get that done sooner than later. So I guess I'd make a motion to pass a resolution to put no-through trucks on Deer Boulevard.
Between...
Between 314 and Highway 50.
314 and Highway 50.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I think this is, you know, we have to do this to preserve, you know, our roads. And I think it's a good thing. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, item 5A, Planning and Zoning Speaker. That was you, Joe? You wanted it added?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of touch base with everybody.
You just wanted to...
Greg Hubner from Avon has requested to speak at, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I didn't see a problem with it. I guess more just wanted to get people aware that we might have a... I guess more just wanted to get people aware that we might have a guest speaker pending discussion here, but a guest speaker regarding wind energy at the Planning and Zoning Meeting February 12th. And I guess open it up to discussion and, you know, potential other speakers on, on subjects like that.
What was his name, Joe?
Greg Hubner.
I don't see an issue with that. I don't see an issue, unless anybody else does.
No, I think it's good. We've got activity in the northeast part of our county. The other thing is, the state has just approved a large wind farm to our west, and all the documentation for that is out on the web. If you want to see the additional restrictions they have put on those compared to previous wind farms. It is interesting, I thought it was a pretty balanced discussion. I know there is legislation that has been proposed to extend the PUC's review deadline from six months to a year. The wind energy companies are fighting it because the tax credits for wind farms are going to start expiring. I think in 2020, they start stepping down. So that's one reason you're seeing such a big wind push across the nation. And of course, South Dakota's pretty windy, as we all know today. So it looks pretty attractive to be in the hills of our county. So I'd encourage anybody to go up to the PUC's website, and if you can get a copy of our current zoning ordinances, compare them and see what we're missing right now. Because that discussion is coming. There will be people coming in from outside our county to voice their concerns with wind farms and outside our county to voice their support for wind farms. So we need to have a fair hearing of this. One thing I do want to note is if they do come, I will be there. So Patty, we'll have a quorum at that because I will want to listen to that gentleman. That'll be February 12th?
Yes.
So it'll be the Planning and Zoning Meeting itself.
And he actually would come early, at 6:15, prior to the Planning and Zoning Meeting.
That might be better, because then, before they actually zone your planning, that might be the best. All right, great. Anything else, Joe, or is that...
No, that was it.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, item number six, Public Comment. Do we have anybody at this time that would like to make a public comment? Come on up, come on up, introduce yourself. Please let us know who you are and where you're from.
All right, I'm Jody Klut, and I live at 43127 Northwest Jimmer Road, Blisterville. So we're the tail end of the county. This last year, part of the road broke away, and I know one of the Commissioners was out...
Could you please be respectful to this lady speaking? Thank you very much.
I know my husband spoke to one of the Commissioners, came out and looked at the road.
You're up, you're by Stone Church, Southeast, okay.
I am, yeah, okay. And we are just curious what the plan is for that road, if there is a plan. It's, it's a hardship. And people do not pay attention to the road closed sign at all. They come barreling past our place. I, I am concerned, someone could really get hurt because we have these cement, the cement barricade going across there now, and they just, they're barreling when they go by. So if somebody would hit that, it would be bad. I would say on an average, we average four to five turnarounds in our yard on a daily basis. It's crazy. Because that road gets used a lot.
Jody, you're, you're the first place off the Stone Church Road?
Yeah.
I, I've been up there and I've looked at that...
Well, yeah, Stone Church is on the other side of the, yeah, okay.
And that's a significant issue that's been going on for several years. And I, I, you know which one we're talking about, Mike? Is there a way we could put a road closed sign closer to the highway?
Well, it is on the highway.
There is.
Okay.
There's road closed ahead and then also barricades.
Yeah, I know there's barricades up there.
And there's a road closed sign, but...
I guess we could, I don't know, put up more of them, another one with flags, I guess?
Or maybe where, you know, like, how many feet ahead or something?
Sure.
Because I think what happens is people think, oh, I just need to get there, so I'm going to just keep going. And it's a straight shot, and they drive like crazy. I mean, they, it's, it's, it's very dangerous. And it's a hardship for us, having that road closed. We still have 22 acres of corn on the other side of that barricade, right on the other side of that barricade. So we have to get our combine, hopefully, up this year, around to try to harvest that.
Are the other Commissioners aware of the situation up there? It's right along the James River. It makes a sharp turn, and with flooding and the erosion, most of that road has collapsed.
About half of it.
It's very, very unstable. We actually, my other job with the James River had a request, and we did some drone video of that because it's so dangerous, you don't even walk on that. I think that there's not a lot we can do from what I've seen, and if you want to chime in on that, the amount of money that it would cost is, I think, was three-quarters of a million dollars from one of the contractors I talked to. And I just don't know what the options we have or something.
So, so you're saying that nothing's ever going to be done with it?
I, I, we, we can look into that more, but there's a lot of similar roads like that up in Spink County and those areas, and there's a layer of, of, I don't know the geologic term, but it's called like a sand, that when the river floods, it absorbs the water. And then that comes out and it caves in. And there's not much you can do with that. It could have you talk with Mike if there's an option. I think the only option would be to move the road further south. Is that your property on the south? Maybe we can look at doing something like that, but...
Clark Engineering was looking, like, looking at doing something there.
Yeah, and that's...
Getting a plan.
We can definitely look into that more, but with the amount of roads we have and the bridges, that's going to be, have to be a discussion that we have. Do we, do we spend this amount of money to fix this road? And I know it really affects you and your family, but there are other roads that are...
Well, and it's not just us and our family. I mean, there, you know, Jamesville is on the other end of that road.
Sure, yes, yep.
And there is a lot of traffic that used to, and quite frankly, I don't mind not having the traffic, believe me.
That's not all bad.
I live close enough to the road that I, I don't like all the traffic that goes by, but this, but it's, it's a hazard the way it is. I mean, something has to be done with it.
Okay.
You can't, even if you don't fix the road, you have to do something to make it a safe area.
Sure. Why don't you speak with our Highway Superintendent, Mike, and get some, get some ideas with him, and would you want to come on the agenda sometime to discuss this more? I'm only supposed to give you three minutes, but we'll get you, we'll get you, we'll get you something figured out in the rest of the...
Is Clark currently working on some proposal, do you know?
Yeah, last day, I knew, I see their survey stakes out there. I was out there a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
Well, we were just curious what was going on with it, because...
Can you, can you maybe just follow up with Clark and maybe get an estimate and then just touch base? So at least you have some closure or some, not out in the dark on what's going on.
So going the other way, going towards Scotland, where the road is, is also collapsing in, and it's, I mean, that's not closed, they just kind of put a little thing around it. Is that the same thing, that nothing will be done with it?
Is that, where is that other one?
Jimmer River Road going the other way, going to Scotland.
I guess I wasn't aware of that. Do you want, would you like to speak on that one?
On the Scotland Road, from the Meadow Road and Scotland Road, well, just from her place, just straight west, there's a curve right before the bridge that's, what, 50 yards off the river?
Yep.
There's a spring coming out of the road. Been here 14 years, and we've just kept adding asphalt, adding asphalt. We had the mill down there, we, we got our, our own asphalt mill that goes on the front of a loader. We took out 10, 10-foot of asphalt. We run one drain tile. Clark Engineering is supposed to be coming up with a plan to do some French, French drains and, so that just got tore up this, this fall, so.
Get us up to speed and give us an update on that next meeting, if you would.
Okay.
All right, that work for you?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to make a public comment at this time? Going once, go, come on up, sir. You got three minutes?
No, no problem. All right, I'm Brian Klut, and I also live in that general area. I just want to voice a concern about, you talk about putting load limits on. There's still a lot of corn out in the country, you know? And some of that corn is probably going to have to come out this spring. If you put the load limits on too soon, you're going to really limit the farmers being able to get that corn out. It was an exceptionally year of rain, and we're kind of stuck with a lot of corn, high moisture corn that's stuck out in the fields. So, that's just a concern. I want you to think about.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make a public comment at this time? Going once, going twice. All right, public comment period is closed. Items for next meeting? I guess we're going to discuss a consent agenda for the next meeting, whether or not we're going to keep that. So that'll be on the agenda. We also need to discuss the direction and give the recommendation for the Planning Commission on the direction we want and the time, timeline for changes. If we're going to do, I believe that's what we discussed at the last meeting. And we were also going to seek applicants for zoning and planning membership. That's what we agreed on last time, is that correct? We're just gonna, we're not going to say the number, we're just, if we're interested, and then we're going to see applicants, is that how everybody recalls?
Right, because I think Pat will have, he'll have that, and then we just have to give him approval.
And then something I was going to have, and we will discuss it at the next meeting, is maybe adding a permanent part to the agenda where we can get updates from these Commissioners. I know I get emails all the time, and I think that would be a time where we could discuss certain things. Let's just have it as a permanent agenda item. And then if we need it, we have it. If we don't need it, well, then we just skip over. Is it, and we'll discuss that at the next meeting. And are we doing Highway Superintendent for next meeting? Yes. Okay, so selection of the Highway Superintendent for next meeting. Anything else that we'd like to add for the next meeting? Anybody? All right.
Oh, next meeting, I have been selected for federal grand jury duty. So that Tuesday, I have to show up at Sioux Falls at 9:00 AM. So our meeting's at 6:00, I may be a little late, depends on if I'm still evaluating a federal jury hearing. So four days, I might be up there. It's exciting.
Yeah, that's neat. Anything, anybody else? All right, I didn't hear a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hey, one more. This Saturday is Jay Cutts's open house. I'm, I'm planning to show up sometime between 2:00 and 4:00, anybody else?
Yes.
I cannot go that day. And I don't know about Don.
And if Don is back, I think he might be back, I bet he goes. So you should probably get that in, that we might pop in at the same time. Any other meetings we might be all at?
Yankton, Dan Pure, Joe and I are headed to tomorrow. I don't know if Don's going to that, but I believe we advertised that in the paper. And then Planning and Development District Tree, I think you and I are going, I'm not aware of John, of Don.
And that's Thursday?
That was already advertised in the paper.
That's Thursday, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Okay, one more thing. Historical, 74 years ago today, Audie Murphy, the recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor, received it 74 years ago today, fighting off 127 Germans single-handedly with a 50 caliber machine gun.